The meeting of the zoning board of appeals will now come to order. Roll call. Mr. Bichilli.
Present.
Present. Mr. Corrin.
Present.
Mr. D'Angelo.
Present.
Mr. Mazzoni.
Present.
Mr. Colometto.
Present.
And Mr. Tucker.
Present.
Present. Quorum is present. First application before the board is application A 1515. This is the application of Julie, Diorcy, Bernado, 89 Dale Street Revere, and David Massey, DND LLC, 25 Ruini Drive, Wakefield, requesting a qualified building lot variance for Lot 320, Dale Street, to enable the appellant to construct a two-family dwelling and a parking variance for Lot 319, Dale Street, at 89 Dale Street to enable the appellant to maintain an existing two-family dwelling with two parking spaces. Name and address for the record.
Chairman.
If you're -- it should turn green. If you just hold that button for a second. Now let go. There you go.
Mr. Chairman, members. Good afternoon. James, I've got a letter, 385 Broadway Revere, on behalf of the appellant. Currently, the appellant, Ms. Diorcy, actually owns Lot 319, which is a two-family house that is currently existing. So there is a separate lot that's separately identified and is a qualified lot for building purposes, which is Lot 320. So with regard to the site plan review letter from Frank Strinji, I'd like to address those issues in the order in which he sets them out. So the first relief that Site Plan Review Committee indicates is that we need to qualify Lot 320, Dale Street, as a buildable lot and deal with the existence of that shed, which is shown in the rear where Lot 19 and Lot 20 converge. And it appears to be that the existence of that shed, which Mr. Strinji suggested might cause us some difficulty and would need a validation. That shed has been in existence for 60 or 70 years, and it serves the home that is located on Lot 319. It's not located on Lot 320. It encroaches on Lot 320. So that shed is slated to be raised, as is indicated on the plan. The note on the plan is right behind the boundary, the rear boundary of Lot 319, as it's noted by the surveyor. So to the extent that the shed disqualifies Lot 320, I can understand why Frank was concerned about that and wanted it to be blessed by the Board of Appeals. And the explanation for that simply is and has been always, that's not a building on Lot 20. It's not a structure that serves Lot 320. It's a structure that serves Lot 319 that happens to encroach. The second relief that Site Plan Review indicates is that Lot 319, the existing two-family house, does not comply with the limited parking exception under 1724-030. And I can see two reasons why that might be true. And I think the first is that the driveway on Lot 319 is in the front, 7.8 feet, and in the rear at its widest point, 7.9 feet. Statue of the Ordinance requires eight feet. So to the extent that there would be relief requested for the limited parking exception regarding the width of the driveway, we would be requesting a variance of .2 feet. So ever how many inches that is. The second would be whether or not that Lot 320, because it's a two-family house, in order to qualify for the limited parking exception, would require more than the existing two parking spaces that it now enjoys. In reading 1724-030, the limited parking exception section of the ordinance says, "The limited parking exception, provided that the lot was legally conforming at the time it was created," and it was, it was created back in the 1890s. "The structure thereon was legally conforming structure," and it was. "And there exist at least two modified parking spaces on the developed lot." Now, two parking spaces do exist on the developed lot. So I would have a minor disagreement or divergence of opinion with the Site Plan Review Committee as to whether we need a variance, an additional variance for parking in order to meet the limited parking exception. It would seem counterintuitive. I don't -- I would leave that to the board to make a judgment on that. But I think that, reading the words of the ordinance in the plain meaning, it says that there exist at least two modified parking spaces, and they're there on the plan. And so, although they're tandem, and I think that's okay because it's a driveway, if the board somehow is of a different opinion and rules differently, then we would, at worst-case scenario, require a variance for an additional two spaces to accommodate the two-family house, which is existing and has existed with two parking spaces. So to that end, we would leave it to the wisdom of the board. And I think what we need to do is sort of take the 10,000-foot view and look at the house and look at 319, because all of the issues actually revolve around 319, which is the existing house. And so then we would ask the board to accept the premise that the shed, which is going to be removed, is an accessory use, an accessory building on 319 that seems to encroach and does not disqualify 320, and that we require .1, .2 feet of driveway width, and at most a two-car parking variance, although I don't think we do. If the board thinks we do, then we would respectfully request that board issue that, although it is not set out in the Site Plan Review Committee's report. But it's just something that I think needs to be raised.
It is set out in the Site Plan Review. I tend to differ with you there as far as respect to the two parking spaces being undersized.
Right, being undersized. I agree with that.
Two parking spaces, which undersized parking spaces.
Right. I was referring to the number, not the size. I know we need a relief from the size because we have 7'8" and 7'9" as opposed to eight feet.
Opposed to nine feet.
Well, I know.
Nine by 18 is the parking requirement.
You know, I looked at that, and there seems to be a reference to the driveway width being eight. I'm not going to quibble over that.
Yeah.
Because it's really diminutive, and I defer to the wisdom of the board. My concern was, and I don't see it referenced in the Site Plan Review Committee, but I know that it would be on the minds of at least one or two of the members that we might need a variance for another two parking spaces. But that's not pointed out, and he didn't send us here for that, so.
Okay, thank you. Are there any proponents, anyone in favor? Hearing not closed that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Anyone opposed? Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, Stephen Redden, Ward 4 City Council, 347 Vane Street. Gentlemen as well. I'm opposed to this, and frankly, it's more on theoretical grounds. I have no qualm with the homeowner. My understanding is that he's undergone some trying times as of last October, and I sympathize with that. However, historically speaking, back in 1994, we changed our zoning requirements for buildings as proposed by the proponent. And at that time, and from that time going forward, this lot was not a buildable lot. When the owner bought the property in 2010, he knew, or should have known, that it was not a buildable lot. And getting back to my philosophical arguments, I think it's very obvious, or it should be obvious to everybody in this city, that we are now at the breaking point for residential density. We simply cannot bear any more people in our city. It's becoming a public safety hazard. It's absolutely overwhelming us in terms of what we must spend to educate children in this city. We are up against it. I think I've been preaching this since I've been on the city council. I'm happy to hear that finally my arguments against overly dense residential development are finally catching hold, more so hopefully in the sphere of giving up our commercial property. But nonetheless, every time a two-family is built in here, it puts added pressure on all of our systems, our fire department, our police department, our educational systems, our traffic, our snowflowing. Last winter is a perfect example of why parking restrictions must be maintained in the city and how we are almost at a standstill when they're not. Again, I feel as though I've probably been remiss in not being up here before you on items such as this, not only in Ward 4, but in other areas of the city. While I am the Ward 4 Councilor, I do represent the citizens of Ward 4 in citywide issues as well, and this has become such an issue in the city, such a burden on the taxpayers to deal with over-dense development, that I feel as though I need to speak on issues, even though they may not be in Ward 4, and I intend to do so going forward. I think the time for exceptions to our rules has ended, has passed. It's long since passed. I would have sympathy for people who owned the property prior to 1994, but as of right now, we have had these ordinances in place for 20, better than 20 years right now, these ordinances in place, and we must respect them. We must stop giving exceptions, even an inch of exception is too many exceptions given what we're facing today in our city. So if we expect our city to be a livable place for the people who are here, we must stop these exceptions. They're probably, the setbacks and the lot sizes are probably too small as they are, but it is what it is. I'm willing to accept that, but I'm not willing to accept any exceptions. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Anyone opposed? Are you -- you have to step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
We can just give your name if you want.
Miriam Bova, 110 Dale Street.
And you're opposed. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience?
June Fitzgerald, 122 Dale Street.
June Fitzgerald, 122 Dale Street.
I want to give.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
I think there's no other.
You're presenting a letter. Give it to the clerk, please. What was your address, ma'am?
Name.
And your name is?
June Fitzgerald.
June Fitzgerald. And who's at 110 Dale Street?
Miriam Bova.
Miriam Bova. Thank you.
We have a letter here.
And there's a letter being presented.
Harley McGill, Arrow Simpson, 433 Vane Street.
Are there any other opponents? Hearing not closed that side of the hearing. Any members wish to speak? I do have questions, but you can go ahead.
I have a question. And this was conveyed. It was conveyed as one deed for 7,000 square feet. Are there two deeds for that property?
I don't believe there are two deeds, but there are two lots that are defined.
I understand that.
I understand that, but.
No, they're both on the same deed.
The way I read the conveyance in 2010, it says that it's a, it's two lot numbers, but it's one parcel of 7,726 square feet.
I think the aggregate is 7,000 plus, plus, plus square feet, but it's defined as two separate lots. Yes. You're reading it. Okay. Counselor, if you don't mind staying up there, I have a few questions. Could you tell me the existing size of the current driveway that is in Lot 319 at 89 Dale Street?
I can't. It's 35 feet long and 7.9 feet wide.
Okay. The current size of that, it has a cement wall, like a little retaining wall that divides the two lots currently?
Yes.
That is 9 feet 9 inch wide parking space, currently, today, existing right now. So yes, on that photo is to pick 9 feet 8 or 9 inches. I'll give you an inch. So currently, there can be two cars parked there without any encroachment, or if it is, you're saying two lots, but this home has been there for, I don't know how many years, but with the cement columns and everything, it's been there for quite over 25 years. So I would guess to say that that 9 feet 9 inches has already been taken by whatever that legal law is that you take land when you have it for so many years. And I'm not an attorney, so I don't know that. Adverse possession. Okay, but, because the driveway has been from column to column, and this is where I'm questioning, because I've been told this by, on phone calls, and I went up there today with the tape, just so that I could be clear myself. And 9 feet 8 inches from column to column is existing, because there is a whole cement borderline going up there to divide so that the dirt don't come from the other lot. Right. So you're actually taking existing parking spaces that have been 9 feet 8 inches, which have been in compliance, and vehicles could go in there freely and get out of the car without any problems, that you're asking now to make them 7 feet 8 inches. So that whole lot line will be pushed over. Am I correct to say that, based on the pictures and based on what's being presented here tonight or today?
I think what happens is that the lot line is correctly shown on the plan, and there probably is an encroachment by that wall.
Okay, so it's been there for.
Forever. But I'm not sure that you can get adverse possession against yourself.
Then that's probably true. I don't, I'm not a lawyer, but you're taking what's existing and trying to make it smaller, which is causing more of a burden on the community, because in theory, 7 feet 8 inches, then if they put a fence in between those homes, he's not getting, person's not getting out of a car, out of a vehicle.
I agree. And when I gave you the dimension, the length dimension, I counted that to the end of the house, but of course, there's, you know, a continuation of the driveway, or potential continuation of the driveway without impediment beyond that. But that's effectively what's being used.
I went from the corner of the house foundation, and that was like 9'9".
Yeah.
Then when you do the columns, which are out in front of the house, which is the driveway, it makes the driveway prominent, that is 9'8". So existing vehicles have been going in there for many years for 9'8". If you were to build a home next to that and put a fence up on the property line, which there's no defined property line, no markers, nothing when I was there, this isn't even a certified plot plan from what I'm seeing here. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is not a certified plot plan that should have been presented to the Board of Appeals. But in looking at that, I do see that the people that are questioning this and stating that it would be a burden on the community, in fact, it would be, because you're taking something that's been existing for many years, that people can park, even though it's two spaces, people could park there freely. If in fact, they were to divide that lot and build a home, they won't get out of the vehicle. So I, in good conscience, could not allow that. I could not say that I would allow to take that driveway that's existing from 9'8" and make it 7'8".
If, with the chair's permission, maybe the owner, who has a little more.
Oh, no.
Working knowledge of that.
I hope that I've been saying everything that you can understand.
There actually was a fence there.
And you are, could you state your name and address for the record?
Anthony Bernado, 89 Dale Street.
Okay, thank you.
There was a fence there since we left the house, and we just recently took it down. I drive a Chevy 2500, and I have no problem getting in and out of my truck over there.
Okay. But because the fence was over 9'9".
If this is a wall, the fence would stay on the wall.
Yes, but that's 9 feet 8 inches. The property line is now going 7 feet 8 inches. That current wall is being pushed over to your home.
The normal person will not drive a truck the size of mine.
No, but league, in our ordinance, it's 9 feet by 18 is a parking space. That's what people have to have, 9 feet by 18 for each parking space. If that little wall that's there now, that's not the property line according, is what's being stated here tonight.
It's supposed to be a joint driveway also, that they're putting, right?
There's no such thing as a joint driveway.
I think it would, but if I can give, I would need for a common driveway.
Yeah. But you see where I'm coming from? Do you, as the owner, do you understand where I'm coming from? Because right now, you have that little wall there.
Yeah.
That makes it so that you have no problem. That's 9 feet 8 inch driveway. If you were to sell, to divide this land, you've got to move your, that wall, that little wall is coming over, so you're only going to have 7 feet 8 inches.
It would be coming down, so.
But you're making two lots. So whoever buys Lot 320 and puts up a fence, you're not getting out of your car. It's 7 feet 8 inches.
I see why you wanted me to vote.
Do you follow what I'm saying, counsel? Thank you.
I understand that it presupposes that somebody is going to erect a barrier.
No, is, is there any other questions for the board? So if this were to get denied tonight, of course, they wouldn't be able to come back in front of us. Does the council want to continue this and see if the lot line can be changed? Or I don't know, but I don't want to have this become an issue.
No, I understand, and as the chair well knows, you know, we like to keep it as simple and focused and clear as possible. So when we hear that there's discussions with the potential or prospective buyer for a common driveway or an easement or something, that doesn't show on the plan. And I think if we may be able to have some time to make an additional submission to the board and try to crystallize that, and also to look into the issue that the chair raised with regard to that historical parking over the line. So I think maybe those are a few things that might be well worth investing a couple of hours with the surveyor and with the potential, with the person who has it under agreement, and maybe the very insightful questions that were put to us today can be more intelligently and accurately answered with the assistance of the surveyor. So yes, I guess that's the.
No, and I just have a question for the clerk. If that was in fact, and they would still, it's 10 feet side yard required for the, so no matter what, they'd have to ask for a variance. So I don't even know if it's.
Yeah, this was a little bit of a challenge at the Site Plan Review, because we went through a couple of different iterations of this denial letter until Frank actually ended up with what you have before you. So, you know, we kind of play the hand that we're dealt, and that's what Frank thought. But nonetheless, if, and we would waive the, and agree to the exclusion of the number of days between now and the next day that we, if the board allows us to continue this hearing on, we'd exclude the number of days for purposes of 48, for the time limitation. Please.
Okay, so we'll hear that at the end of the.
Okay. And while I'm here, just off the subject, does the board know, has the board set hearing dates for October and November?
Looks like the 28th of October. I don't think for November.
There's nothing for November, but let me just check the calendar.
Yeah, what ordinarily, Mr. Clerk, with the November, and I know that we have the Thanksgiving holiday that comes right on that week.
We wouldn't, we'd be meeting the week before Thanksgiving, most likely.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay.
We can get it wrong. We're fighting against license community space.
Right.
And that's their, that's their main hearing date, so it depends on where we can get space.
Okay. That was just for another matter.
Our next calendar item number. The next matter before the board is application A 1516. This is the application of Spira Stagana, 74 Grover Street Revere, requesting a rear yard setback variance to enable the appellant to construct an addition in the rear yard of an existing commercial building for a cooler refrigerator on part of Lot D at 649 Unit 2 Squire Road Revere. Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
Spira Stagana, 649 Squire Road.
Do you have any more testimony to add, or this is pretty much it?
It's pretty much it. I mean, the space is a little bit challenging. I leased the space. There's no room for a walk-in refrigerator. The drive-in is not being utilized for anything, the existing Dunkin' Donuts drive-through. So to make this operation actually function, I'm requesting that we utilize a portion of that space for an outdoor refrigerator.
Okay. Whether it's a public hearing, I will have to ask if there are proponents. Hearing not closed that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Hearing not closed that side of the hearing. Any members wish to question? Go right ahead.
I have a question. Between the cooler and the street there, I can't see it very well on the drawing, but what is that dimension there? How much space is left behind the cooler where the drive-through was?
How much space after?
Yeah.
Well, there's a curve there, and the grass starts, so that's at 9 feet. The cooler is actually 8 feet, so it leaves a one foot space between the curb.
So there is no more access on that side, is what you're saying?
You can't drive, you wouldn't be able to drive around the building anymore, but we're not using it for a drive-through.
And this doesn't come under anything to do with fire codes or anything like that for.
No. I bought it at Site Plan Review. Everybody said that there wasn't an issue with it.
Okay. Just so you'll know, it is on the plan with, it's 9 feet 8 inches on, I believe, on 9 feet 9 inches.
There's an existing concrete slab that they utilize for the drive-through, for the weight of the vehicle, so we would utilize that existing concrete slab to put it right on top, because the rest of the drive-through is all tar, so it actually works out perfect for us on that side.
It's a dumpster.
Is a dumpster remaining in that place?
There's a dumpster corral that's separate, yeah. That would stay where it is.
It's not sure.
It would be to the, let me see the picture, to the left, that angle that's on the property over there. It's probably 12 or 15 feet past that in the corner. There's a corral that's fenced off that fits two full-size dumpsters, 10 yarders.
Okay. All right, no more, no further questions, and we'll take the next calendar, and we'll vote at the end. So just have a seat, and we vote at the end. Thank you.
The next application before the board is the application of James J. Solona, 104 Patriot Parkway Revere, requesting a variance, parking in the front yard variance, and a reduction of landscape requirements in the front yard, and a special permit to modify a non-conforming single-family structure and convert it to a two-family dwelling on Lots 41 and 42 at 104 Patriot Parkway Revere.
Is there anyone in the audience present? Applicant is not present, so, did he leave? Oh, all right. Please step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name's James Solona, 104 Patriot Parkway. I'm sorry.
Okay. So we have the information that you presented us. I will ask if there are any other proponents. Hearing, none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Hearing, none, I'll close that side of the hearing. I do have, I am going to request to have this tabled, and request that the building inspector and the Department of Public Works provide us the documents that they, that you stated that they gave permission for you to already asphalt and get a curb cut there, because you are coming for a variance and the work is already done, which is-
Unfortunately, maybe, maybe it's because I'm that stupid, I thought it was for, to bring the building up, to put the apartment. I was, a year ago, I was approved for 40, 49% or something to go up, and then my daughter got pregnant, and please, I didn't want to go through all that crap. But anyway, the bottom line is that I needed to have a whole apartment upstairs, and that's when they came back, and then Benny, Christopher, I think it is, told me steps to do, to plans and stuff, and I had them all done, and he thought it was all right. But I couldn't get the apartment done upstairs until I had my fourth parking spot. And that's when we went in, we got, Donnie came, Donnie Goodman came, he measured it, got, we got it asphalted, I got the paper from him for the permit and stuff, so.
Okay, so-
Doing it ahead of time-
But seeing that that was done, I'm going to request the Department of Public Works and the building inspector to provide us the documentation saying they authorized that and permitted it.
I can bring you the-
Nope, the building department will present it to us.
Okay.
The other issue was that we do not have dimensional controls for this two-family home. You may be within the-
Thirty feet.
You're asking for a special permit, so we do ask that we have the height of the proposed dwelling depicted, and that we have plans showing that, so that we can check your abuttes, both in back of you, beside you-
Right.
So to see if you're going to cause any problems with the area homes.
I'm almost sure I got that, and we did that already. It's up 30 feet, not-
But you may have done it with the site plan review. You have not presented it in the documents that, to the Zoning Board of Appeals, which we're asking for. So we will ask, I will ask that this get continued, and if you have the votes to continue it, then we would ask that you present what I've already requested, and we will then request from the Department of Public Works and the building department the documentation that they-
They'll ask you what you need from me. You want me to bring you back something?
You will have to present the plan showing all of the height of the proposed dwelling to the city clerk's office.
Okay.
Okay?
It's got to be on the plan.
It has to be on a plan. So if you have the set of plans already, you're going to have to present them to the city clerk to show, okay?
Yeah, Richie Salu construction, he's the, he has all that stuff.
If you have a question, you can call the city clerk's office, and-
They're not on the plan.
They're not on that plan, so he's going to need them.
Okay.
Okay? And we're not going to get into that here. If you have a question, you could always come to the clerk's office.
You, may I ask this, that plan that he has, does he want that on that plan?
Everything has to be on this plan.
It has to be on this plan. So you have to modify that plan to show it all.
I'll have to call the guys, the people that have done that, and tell them I need the-
These measurements are, we don't know the measurement over here.
We need the parking spaces, the true, the sizes and stuff. If you have any questions, you can call the clerk's office.
Okay, well, I'll call this, I'll call these guys. I just paid them for all that.
Okay.
I'll give them a holler. They come back and give me the measurements you want.
All righty.
Height two, you're saying. You want height two, you said, right?
Yeah. He should know all the dimensional requirements that the Zoning Board of Appeal requested.
Okay.
Okay?
I appreciate it.
All right, now if we can ask for our roll calls. You may have a seat.
The first is application A1515 of Diorcy, Bernado, and Massey for, I guess they're requesting a continuance. Is that correct?
Yes.
Question will be coming on continuation of this matter to the next meeting of October 28th at 4:00 PM in the City Council Chamber. Mr. Bacilli? Yes, Mr. Corrin? Yes, Mr. D'Angelo? Yes, Mr. Mizony? Yes, and Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this is continued to October 28th at 4:00 PM in the City Council Chamber.
And please have a certified plot plan brought back with the dimensions on it. Thank you.
The next matter before the board is application A1516, relative to request of a variance for a cooler refrigerator structure outdoors at 649 Unit 2 Squire Road. Question comes on granting the relief requested. Mr. Bacilli? Yes, Mr. Corrin? Yes, Mr. D'Angelo? Yes, Mr. Mizony? Yes, Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this is granted. Statutory time, they can't build right away.
So you're in the audience, you can't do anything until you get a written approval, and there's a statutory, but you'll get written approval?
Right, of course.
Okay, all right, you're all set.
Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Next application is A1517. This is a special permit application of Mr. Solona. I thought there was going to be a request for continuation.
Yes.
Question comes on continuation to October 28th at 4:00 PM. Mr. Bacilli? Yes, Mr. Corrin? Yes, Mr. D'Angelo? Yes, Mr. Mizony? Yes, Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
This is continued to October 28th.
And we are requesting the DPW and building department.
Right.
Okay, thank you. The meeting is now adjourned. Next meeting, October 28th at 4:00 PM.